National operators also choose locations, but for the entire Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex, Panera has ranked every potential intersection that has a certain amount of its criteria that it sort of is on the radar. So the prosper may not be on the radar because it's just so low on some of these ingredients that it just doesn't register yet. So they prioritize all these intersections and they've developed basically a priority on each one of the intersections that they're not in yet and based on kind of a buffer distance between their locations. And they actually go into each one of those individual trade areas or opportunity areas and start looking at real estate and score the real estate within that intersection and prioritize the position of where they want to be within that intersection. And if the number one or number two position, maybe number three position is not available, then they constantly continue to monitor. So it may not be the fact that Panera doesn't want to be in Louisville, but in essence the kind of the A-plus location to where they want to be, it just doesn't have any availability yet. So they're, you know, they're working on other intersections that has the A-location that can deliver the performance they're looking for.
Lower hanging fruit.
At lower hanging fruit. Well, and two, if you go back to the science that, when we were doing work with Walgreens or Walmart or Target, because it's so data-driven and they have so many store locations, they're able to actually predict what they're going to do performance-wise in store with a plus or through, plus three or four percent of margin of what they actually open the doors. So they have, they have very accurate store forecast and so it may be if they go to that third-tier location or fourth-tier location in Louisville, their impact on sales is going to be so significant that there's another location that they can just get a higher return on their investment in another location where that A-opportunity is.
That's another example, Target used to be on one side of the freeway.
Right.
And then they moved to the other side of the freeway. We always tend to assume, we didn't really know it was a more cost issue than the store location demographics issue with, weren't really sure.
Target's interesting because they actually can create or ship the market. So they're, they're more of a destination user. They just need to be kind of in the middle of about 120,000 people. And so moving from one side of the intersection to the other, people will make that adjustment. So Walmart, Target have the luxury of being able to, you know.
There was more than that, though. They went from Target to.
Super Target.
That's true. It's true. They needed room and that's why they moved across the way.
And on the west side, it's congested. I've actually put a store on the west side years ago and it's congested. And just go back a bit, what Jason was saying about the real estate with Panera is absolutely true because what would happen in the real world is Jason, being my broker, would say, hey, this property opened up because I would have given Jason the instructions, when these open up, let me know because I'm working nationally trying to fill my gaps. And if Jason calls up and says, hey, that one location, we can get something there. If I'm going to say, oh, let's look at it, that means I'm going to start spending money on it. A little bit of money, but I'm going to start, so I have to plug it into my system. And so that's why we have people like Jason, broker developers who have their thumb on what's going out there.
So I think if you're going to go pursue retail or start to look at retail, it's really a good idea to understand where the consumer is. One of the best reads on, we're all trying to figure out where the, what the new consumer looks like and where are we going and what are their shopping patterns? And, you know, this post-recession consumer hasn't quite settled out yet. But one of the better reads on this that I think really nails the wells, a published article called The Darwinian Gale. So if you're interested in the subject, Google Darwinian Gale and it's a fairly simple read, but a good read. But right now, if I want to buy something, I can type in my iPhone and find, you know, where it is in stock and where the cheapest price is and I can decide, do I want to order it online and have it shipped to my door or do I want to go over to, you know, Vista Ridge Mall because it's closed and they have three in stock? And so consumers have extreme information on price, availability, and so as you're, as you're merchandising your market, you have to think of long-term, where are the consumers going and what is availability and, you know, where you can be competitive in the bricks and mortar and then how really this internet platform is going to compete with your shopper. I think the bricks and mortar is going to continue to be relevant for a number of reasons, but you certainly have to understand what the consumer has and where they are and what you have available.
Have you guys looked into or have you thought about, I'd be interested in your opinion on the, what they call showroom, where I go in and I go to Best Buy and I far code scan it, buy it and stuff, right there in Best Buy stores?
There's a lot of formats, certainly they're, they're looking to roll that out. My prediction that, you know, certainly Walmart's heading in that way with these smaller 5,000 square foot formats or 15 that are going to look a lot like a Walgreens and Walmart that offer a much limited selection, but they already have the distribution set up so you can get it even that day. And I would be very surprised, this is prediction, so I don't have any research on this, but that Amazon will open up some bricks and mortar locations that would have that opportunity to have questions about it. They have, I mean, they have the distribution channel set up storefront is fairly inexpensive and they can circulate a scale that makes sense. This is obviously another trend, you know, more importantly in malls, but we're seeing this application even at the regional level. I didn't actually order these, but you can get online now and order custom jeans, custom shirts, you can pick the, you know, the striping on your shoes. And so this, this opportunity of being able to customize your retail products or experiences is starting to become a very popular trend. So I need a new laptop bag and I could have gotten it with the green stripe or plain black and, you know, depending on how conservative you want to be. So it's, I think this is going to be a continued trend and we're certainly following those retail brands that are, that are picking this up and giving that flexibility to the customer base. And then I think interesting luxuries back, this has a lot to do with the post-recession consumer. Prior to the recession, I think, you know, a lot of people were more interested in just brands. If it had this brand, you know, there was a certain amount of appeal. But the customer is looking for quality. They're expecting quality, but they're expecting the experience with the quality. So the operators that understand this and get this are being rewarded. But you can't just stick a brand on something and expect it to sell or work anymore. And so that's been the change. There's, there's a lot of, you know, practical decisions and women especially because they're the biggest soft goods shopper, they're still buying high-end goods, they're just not buying it the same amount of frequency. So instead of four times a year, they'll, they'll try to find opportunities to, you know, buy things that they can mix and match or wear a couple of times. So there's a lot of focus on that. I think eBay started this trend and the furniture resellers, but actually vintage is something that we're seeing a lot more trends coming in. You know, you've got kind of quasi-vintage operators like Topshop that just opened up in Chicago and Anthropologie, but we're even seeing these vintage kind of resale shops that are really niche and come out in old town type environments. So that's been fun to watch and they're doing very well. And then you get into categories such as specialty retail. You know, Apple is certainly a great example or Wegmans grocery stores in the Northeast. But I wanted to throw in a couple, Trader Joe's, we spent a lot of time here on their entry, you know, really excited to see them. Their customer, it looks a lot like a Panera customer. So if you want to try to correlate what a Trader Joe's customer looks like, you can go back to the Panera slide. There's a lot of correlation between Trader Joe's and the Panera customer base. And then I also wanted to use an example of Babes. I'm not a great fan of the food and quality, but as a lot of people are, they're doing about 350,000 meals a year out of most of their stores and their regional uses. So you don't necessarily have to track an Apple store to get that success. I would even consider Babes and some of these unique niche operators as a specialty retailer. So what can we look forward in 2011? Pay a lot of attention to, you know, the markets that have low unemployment and have, you know, the right demographics and the job growth. I like this slide. Texas got two of the top 10 states as it relates to average monthly spending. So we pay, we pay a lot of attention to not necessarily this type of propaganda, but really the statistics behind it from a micro level of, you know, what is the spending propensity? What is the disposable income? What is availability? What are, you know, what's going on in the region from a job growth standpoint? And then even at the household level, what different household types are spending categorically and looking at what's available so that you can really start to predict the amount of demand that might be available in certain nuances or areas.
So is the household spending the first thing you look at?
Household spending, income is a big component. We actually look at, look at about 20 different variables.
I'm sure you do, but what's the first thing you look at? I'm sure there's a lot of.
Population first.
Okay.
Just density. And income's second. In any, in, in, in any retailer model, population, income.
I know it's made up a lot of different things. And then from a retailer perspective, like for instance, Cici's Pizza, I want to look at population, that's a daytime population, lunch. I mean, so every retailer goes after their unique.
And in every, there's some retailers that have different formats that cater to even different segments. So you might have a urban, you know, operator, a 7-Eleven, pretty much will operate across all tiers and they want, they look at, you know, population density and, and really traffic patterns. They want to be on the apex of a market and the path of ants. So, you know, they're, you know, every retailer is certainly different, but in population income are big.
Can you pop back a second? You mentioned Woodward. Washington DC number one, but at the same time you said you're looking at unemployment. They're over 10%.
Right, right.
So I would consider them not necessarily, I mean, yeah, they've got a huge number there. What's driving that low or that high end, high relative high end of employment, put them on this list?
Well, you have to put this also perspective of cost of living, you know, so they're, I mean, they're spending more per capita per household, but they have a higher cost of living too and have higher income. So you can't look at one statistic and say, you know, that's it, I'm running.
And those numbers, they're very sad.
Right.
She did, well, said that they also have the number one payroll in the country. Highest salary in the country. A retailer is going to look at that and ask the same question, why? I've done deals in DC and I'm looking at that and I'm going to guess it's because there's two people in the household working, making good money.
Yeah, that's, that's a part, I mean, it's certainly part of, it's insightful, but it's not actionable.
And then there are segments of that, the city limits up there that are just blank.
Right, yeah, right. That's everywhere.
Yeah, but when I was out there, it was just such a dichotomy, it was sort of, there's no like middle class in this.
Yeah, you're right. It's surprising, isn't it?
I mean, that's very stark difference.
That's why I think it's important when you develop your strategy to look at things in a very micro economy, you know, if you're, if you're looking at Old Town, just look at Old Town chocolate ingredients perspective because that's going to be totally different than.
Than their core.
Than their core. Or, or even, you know, the Interstate 35 and Main Street, or really even mid-block between here and Interstate 35 would be kind of a different program because the ingredients, the drivers and a lot of things are different.
Is that the Washington phenomenon, don't they also benefit from a fairly high transient rate?
No question.
It's a completely different market, I mean.
And then as you're putting together kind of a recruitment plan, ultimately what, part of what we do is to start to run the analytics and then let some of these operators build to the top and figure out from a probability standpoint. But capital expenditure also has a big part and so we, we track and monitor the brands and their expansion plans because the probability of getting a Subway that's going to open up 4,000 stores is a whole lot greater than the probability of capture and get repulsed if they only open up 150 stores nationwide. For Target this year, it's only going to open up 15. You know, you have to be one of the top 15 markets in the United States in order to capture a Target. So we spend a lot of time tracking not only retailers, retail requirements, but capital expenditures and expansion plans because all of that has, comes into play. Rudy's Barbecue is a great operator in the right area, but they can only, they don't have, they only have the operations to open up maybe one or two stores a year locally at best. And so even though the ingredients may be there, you may be on the pecking order, you know, for year three or four from now just because they just don't have the capital expenditures and the operations to, the velocity to get there quick enough.
Go back, I assume Dollar General, Family Dollar, Dollar Tree are all separate companies?
Yes, right. Yeah, this is just a list of some. This is an example. But all the dollar stores are, they're all independently owned, separately owned.
We, we.
They know each other well.
We, we tracked about 8,000 different locations and over 4,000 brands, so, you know, there's, there's a lot of these nuances, but these, these are the major categories, the national guys that you would.
What's the trend there that's going on? You didn't used to see hardly any of those, now they're like in the top, the top 10, are they just trying to siphon off Walmart's?
You talked about the dollar stores?
Yeah, the types of.
Well, I know, I let you talk, I said, well, a lot of that is, yes, Walmart's a big deal, but all of a sudden, they are, they make, the owners of that, of those companies are very, very wealthy and the entry barrier for them is very, very low. And so they can open up a store relatively inexpensively because they go off, they don't take good real estate, they don't have to. And people will find them and they have no, if you look at their stores, there's not very many of them that have good building aesthetics because they don't have to. That's.
It's either they don't have any people in them because of the accounts.
That's part of it. But I know them a lot because I've done a lot of work in the Southeast where they're headquartered and they're everywhere. It's like Dairy Queen's over here, they're everywhere in the Southeast. And now they just, they're expanding because they can, it's their time.
And they're getting a lot of closeouts and stuff that aren't main sellers, so they, so they.
Big lots too.
Correct.
Could all three of them be kind of focused on lease opportunities?
Not necessarily. They have some, the developers will come in and build for them and the developers will sell it. They're just not, from a developer's standpoint, please step in amongst step on your toes, but we know some of them, building a Dollar General store is roughly the same as building a CBS Walgreens. It's the same processes, but the developer building a Walgreens will have a more difficult time because of where they have to set the land, but the rewards are so much greater. When you do a Dollar General store, you don't make as much money, you just don't.
That's one of your questions.
Right. And B-locations and B-operating. And then we spend a lot of time tracking, you know, store growth and I won't get into each one of these, I'll be more than happy to provide the data behind this, but we spend a lot of time just tracking, you know, store growth this year versus last year and trying to understand, you know, what are the differences and the nuances in each one of these individual brands? So we track apparel, you know, looking at grocery, you know, the discount stores, you can see, you know, a lot of changes increased in those continually. Department store growth obviously is, is starting to slow continually, Sears actually negative growth. And then obviously the trend, we talked a little bit about some of the national expansion, but Panera has gone from, and I'm going to continue to just pick on Panera, Panera's gone from 4,500 square feet down to 3,750 on a floor plan and getting the same yield or even higher yield out of the smaller floor plan from operational efficiencies. And so the national brands are obviously looking at ways to reduce their occupancy costs and sort of they're finding efficiencies in, in store layout or they're removing some of the lower margin items and reducing their floor plan, floor plans nationwide. And so what you're doing is you're seeing some surplus space, you know, on the edge of Best Buys, you're starting to see a little leasing sign some side of Best Buy, making the 5,000 square feet available. And then they're also going to these little 5,000 square foot kiosks instead of having the big 20 or 25 or 30,000 square foot stores. They're finding much smaller stores, but they're scalable so they can penetrate, you know, greater market mass. And so there's definitely a big national trend in, in national brands reducing their floor plan. And then we spend a lot of time looking at even more on a local basis, the distribution of shopping center types and, and, and the demand for certain goods and services and the tenants in essence occupy these different shopping centers. And then if you look going forward, we're seeing most of the growth occurring in these lifestyle centers for the same reasons that I told you earlier, you know, they offer this place-making, kind of a higher end goods and services. And then you can even mix Highland Village, you can even mix in local neighborhood goods and service-oriented businesses within those environments. But there's certainly an opportunity for place-making that's appealing. Power centers I think are going to continue to be relevant just because they can offer, you know, low, lower margin or lower price goods in that format. And I think neighborhood centers you're going to see continue to increase in, in demand and number, but I think the formats has to, I think there's got to be place-making components in that neighborhood environment for that to really work, work well. So what that would look like is maybe a pharmacy with a bank and an integrated strip center, but maybe a little bit increased common area, integrated in a bike or trail plan with a fountain. Again, you don't have to overdo it, but I think just pull in some place-making and some new urbanism concepts, concepts into the, into the neighborhood environment.
Could you describe, if you guys are defining a lifestyle center as opposed to the other types of center?
There's definitely a gross leasable area difference from a size standpoint, but it's really how it's merchandised. So a lifestyle center would be South Lake Town Square or Highland Village.
The overall concept.
Open air type environment.
That blockable.
Right.
Space with shopping.
It's almost entertainment, just walking around. It makes you feel good if you walk.
That's an excellent question, I think it was talking about earlier.
By pure definition, a power center is by the anchor. So you'll have usually a general merchandiser or a big box anchor or maybe a dependent with the grocery store. It's formatted differently from Target.
Is those power centers as opposed to lifestyle centers, is there still a lot of risk associated with occupancy?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And so it's, it's a, it's a big issue. We deal with those, we deal with, you know, public policy issues, so zoning, what you can and can't do, and a lot of times those conflict with, you know, the market demand or even a merchandising strategy. And then obviously the tenants are trying to control their own destiny and protect market share and trying to unravel, you know, these co-tenancy clauses or even exclusive uses can be, you know, very complicated, very difficult.
You might describe what those are. I've studied your work. What was it called? Co-tenancy.
Co-tenancy.
It's an agreement that on your lease, that your lease is associated with having someone else's lease active in the store there. They leave, you get a chance to opt out.
When I was a retailer, I would, a developer would come and say, I want you Starbucks or whatever in my shopping center, I would say, okay, I want co-tenancy and I want non-exclusive, nobody else can sell these products, here's a list. And I want these people here. If any of those things change, I have to approve it or else I get remedied, be it, I can do whatever I want, not whatever I want.
That's a big question.
Right, yeah.
So is Fire Wheel a power center or a lifestyle center?
It's a hybrid, but in essence, it's really truly a mall, but it would be considered kind of a quasi-lifestyle center.
To that, are you, I'm just curious, I've always heard that phone asked, but are you seeing any movement back to the malls from the lifestyle center? The reason I ask that is I noticed this last year, it's the first time I've ever seen it. During the hot point of Christmas shopping, there were a lot of ads and there were stores, like TJ Maxx was one of them, and I can't remember, there was three, four stores, and they're not located in malls usually, they're located out in lifestyle centers or in the power center, under neighborhood center. And it would say, leave the malls, come to us and shop their commercials for. And that was what it was, get all the mall and show them with their shopping bag and they have their store's names on the submax. And to me, if they're needing to advertise to get people to leave the malls and do that, I wonder if people are starting to go back to the malls. Plus I talked to, I was going to ask you anything about that, I talked to one of the head dogs, I don't remember his name, Jason Peters, and I asked him about building that side of the mall. He said, we would much rather, we would, and of course this is, they just had a new thing opened up yesterday, I don't know what happened, but I was waiting to see, but he said, we'd much rather be located and positioned in a mall than we would a lifestyle or freestanding. We have much better performance in our malls. He said, probably nobody's built these malls. If we need to expand, we got to expand, they're just not built the malls. He said, our profit margin is much better inside a mall than they are freestanding.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, definitely the trend is, is, you know, hasn't, there haven't been any you can close malls, build six years or something, so that a lot, you know, you can get more formats like Garland, Fire Wheel for a number of reasons. And really, some of this is a cultural shift, some of it has to do with how they're programmed, operating expenses are different, so I mean, there's a lot, a lot of flexibility in the brands. So there's a lot of reasons why the open air centers work. I'm not opposed to, you know, we live in the market with one of the best malls in the nation, I mean, North Park does phenomenally well and has figured out a way to continually remain relevant. And we use a lot of Derek's strategies, Derek Wood is the guy that's in charge of leasing at North Park Mall. We use a lot of his strategies, I mean, he knew, I remember going to a presentation before they kicked off the redevelopment, he knew exactly who he's going to pursue once they redevelop and a kind of a pecking order on performance, how to regroup them and how to merchandise, re-merchandise the mall and get that efficiency out of it. But it was a very scientific approach and so, you know, those techniques can be applied to different.
Did you have any movement back to that?
Not yet, no.
Not yet. It's just so expensive.
The one thing too, through his article, he knew what his clientele was and he catered to that.
No question, no question.
Absolutely. He knew what he wanted for clientele, he catered to that.
And he knew the number one guy that, you know, in that category that, you know, could fill the gap and deliver the highest foot traffic and deliver the most synergy, you know. And I guess you could look at it from a broker's agenda or developer's agenda and the broker gets paid on a deal regardless of the quality of tenant, right? It's usually based on the value of the land transaction or, you know, how much that tenant can afford to pay in rent, not necessarily quality. And the developer, most developers, and I ran the retail division for Lucy Billingsley, they had more of an NPV strategy, but 90% of developers have an interim rate of return or it's just time. And a faster time has much more implications than the overall margin. And so developers generally are, is, they're careful from a long-term strategy, but they would rather take a Chili's over a Cheddar's if Chili's was ready to get ready to go, although the sales difference between Chili's and Cheddar's is about twice as much for Cheddar's from a, from a sales performance. So, you know, the strategies are different, but I think it's important that, you know, to really pay attention to the quality and that's exactly what North Park Mall did. Is they knew from a quality standpoint and the revenue and the value and the foot traffic and the exact order who they wanted to pursue. And they didn't always get the number one guy, but they would go to the number two guy or hold out and wait and try to deliver the number one guy in other categories till another number one guy came in place, so.
And what we do is, we'll get to later, every community, every shopping center, every community needs to know who they are. And a lot of times they don't know that, they, they want to, for instance, one of our clients said, we want a Central Market, well, you're not going to get one, this is why, but you can get a Sprouts. And so Sprouts went there. What we do is we identify who should be interested. And so, yeah, don't put your energy in the things that aren't going to, that aren't you, that aren't going to come. Most cities do that. That's a big deal.
Or are you paid for it by bridging the gap through some sort of economic program?
It's usually temporary.
Exactly.
Yeah, it is.
Not usually sustainable.
I ask you a question about neighborhood centers, how much of that, because I see it trending up and, you know, anything else, but how much of that looks like the more traditional neighborhood centers we've seen and how much of that is urban village, new urbanism?
Probably 2% new urbanism and 98% traditional.
Okay.
But I think there's an opportunity there, I really do, and I think long-term that will be rewarded. So that's kind of my own biases, but I think you can integrate some of the new urbanism practices and things that are making the lifestyle centers work on a smaller format and get, and get rewarded for it. And I think it doesn't necessarily have to be looked at from a cost as a development perspective, if you integrate it in with the right designers and principles and kind of the right mix. So I'm going to go through real quick and we've talked a lot about kind of place-making, but these are some of the characteristics, so if you're kind of scoring, you know, your community, these are some of the characteristics. This was a national primary research done by the Knights Foundation and I'd be more than happy to get you a copy, but again, this is a good read, as you're developing Old Town in some of these areas, some of the characteristics that you look for. And in, in, in Richard Florida, obviously, you know, kind of his paralleling some of these from an openness standpoint, you'll see some of these characteristics. You know, his other ones are tolerance, but you'll see kind of eclectic mix. I mean, if you look at Uptown, you know, what makes Uptown really works is there's that openness or kind of eclectic population base, you can have a little bit of everything, young and old, you know, black and white and so on and so forth in preference. And then, and also we talked about aesthetics, but if you look at what, at least what the population characteristics you're looking for is certainly aesthetics when you're involved in a place-making standpoint. And this is a project that we looked at with Scott Polikoff, who you guys may be familiar with from a, from a planning standpoint, but how before we looked at things from a use standpoint, the planning and zoning, and then ultimately kind of argued about form. When you get into, you know, some of the characteristics and some of the planning that you've done in Old Town, where you can actually mitigate risk by kind of designing the form and getting the land use policies in place and kind of letting the market move with the use, so. One example, and we talked a little bit about RONO, is a case study, and I'll move through this very quickly, this was the original. Babes was doing about 350,000 meals a year, this is what it looked like in 2003. The city looked at, in essence, kind of the district and the cultural characteristics. The city looked at, in essence, kind of the district and the cultural characteristics and did a market analysis and said, if we can bring in a certain amount of infrastructure and investment, I think in this case, it comes in about eight million dollars. You know, would that yield a favorable return? Say that again. Eight million dollars. Very short block, so. So they looked at, you know, the characteristics and really worked on kind of defining the district and, you know, what the building scale and types might look like. And if you go back and look at this last year, this is the look at the end of two thousand and eleven. So far from two thousand and three, they've got fifty thousand square feet in that new commercial. The restaurants there and collective commercials, you know, about twelve and a half million dollars in gross sales with roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So if you go back to their original estimate, they're actually, and I'll show you a slide that shows that, they're actually hurtling above that. But they've got a developer that now is looking at another forty acres at the south end of town, bringing another mixed use concept. And a significant amount of retail operators are already in play additionally. So I think, even my prediction, a ten to twenty percent growth a year on the two fifty number, they could actually end up doubling that number in the next two or three years with just what's on the table being discussed. Half a million in net sales tax.
So what was the year that, I know you said two thousand and three, that's what you figured, but what was the year they, let's say, finished the street improvements and had the first store chain finished?
I believe that was in oh six.
Okay, so they've had the new street and then the first store was finished by oh six, and then it's gone forward.
Okay. About five years.
Okay. And what's interesting, from a retailer's standpoint, most retailers, most niche retailers have been watching this. And as it gets more successful, other people are gonna jump in.
Right.
Although can I add that in their initial retailers, especially restaurants, the city provided a fairly large incentive for those, like two, three, four restaurants.
Was that, that was in addition to the eight million?
Yes.
Yes. They had a five-year forgivable loans. They had different tiers.
That's different.
The city had a mortgage, so and also, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at two fifty on the eight million investment now, I mean, do the math, but it's, it's, but I think you'll see that double in the next two or three years. In the next, so I think they can reduce that horizon. It's not the tenure window that we usually look at, but it was a catalyst investment in a true sense that in essence has spawned, you know, if you really, you know, did measure the indirect and the direct impact, it starts to pencil out pretty quick.
It's not like there's another place to go, very close by.
Have you been there? Have you all ever been to Roanoke?
Oh.
So you've seen it. So it's rocking.
It is.
Yep. Again, it's not like something, another place that's a few miles away.
Right, right.
It is the place in the area.
It, it could have easily continued to be the way it was without any public intervention.
No question about it.
That's true.
I mean, they did this in a down economy. They did this in an economy when nobody was making investments on anything.
And we've actually tracked a lot of the trade area. You've got people from all over compelling, driving up there for the experience.
I was gonna say, you've got, you've got within distance, you've got within ten minutes, Max. You've got Grapevine, you've got, you've got.
No much further than that.
You've got Fort Worth.
I always got a couple of areas you could go in.
You've got Fort Worth, the north part of Fort Worth now, there's a ten minute drive. You jump on thirty-five there and you're down to that, what's that area just below, or just south of?
The Lifestyle Center.
Yeah, all that area there. There are a lot of other choices there, but I think it goes back to what he was saying. People look to that.
Place.
Place.
And energy.
Right.
Sorry, the bar, the taxi parlor down.
Not yet. That's a great idea.
They do search down the line.
Yeah, what, yeah.
I'm not gonna go into that statistic, but the before and after, this is, this is what the, if you go back to oh three, you know, this is what the investment looks like. And then this is, has a layout of at least the current restaurants in play, and I love this picture of all the people waiting in line on Friday night.
What's the icon there? What's that?
Classic Cafe. I mean, Tortilla Flags.
Missed the German restaurant.
Yeah.
Did you say there's, there are bars and restaurants?
Absolutely.
They have a restaurant down there.
Twisted Roots, Couple of Chows, yeah, there's a lot of offsetting there. And so I think it'd be interesting to look at, at least from our perspective, how all this came together. And you had, you had Bays already there, and it was a first mover advantage. He knew his market. You know, the cater market, started growing the Bays concept, and you're churning out, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand meals a year. And, you know, lines on Friday and Saturday, the word gets out. So, I mean, you know, eventually the secret gets out to the restaurant operators that, hey, there's, for whatever reason, it doesn't look very good on paper, but there's a market here.
They started this in two thousand and three.
Correct.
It wasn't a down the comp, you think?
Well, you were kind of on the backside of the oh one, so, I mean, you, it wasn't necessarily vibrant.
I know that September nine eleven is down, and things happen because of that event, but it really didn't start going down until like two thousand seven, two thousand eight.
But the, but the activity, a lot of the activity and increase has happened through, through the recession. So the investment was made pre-recession, but a lot of the activity even since, they had growth even through the recession.
So the growth has gone through the downturn, right? Like I said, the first one was over two thousand and six, but all that growth was during the downturn, right?
People were turning off the tatts at the end of oh six.
Yeah, stopped everything.
Yeah. But this goes back to the demographics of the workforce. What really made this work is Alliance. You had seventeen thousand jobs. You had a significant amount of rooftops, and as you guys mentioned, there was the void in places to really eat. So the market was certainly there. And so what we did recently is we went out and actually did plate study, plate scan, and interviews and started tracking where the heck, you know, are these people coming from that are going to Roanoke? And you start to, you know, understand the nuances of where, you know, where they're pulling and where the customer behavior is. And so if you're gonna set up a merchandising strategy, you start to understand where your consumer base is coming from. And with this data, then you can start to get insight on, you know, the housing and the type of residents and beyond just the workforce. Again, some of those ingredients were for success, or what are the nuances or what are the demographics look like within the ingredients?
Can I, can I ask you, so you went out and actually, you surveyed people that came to that area to determine this large trade area?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So this is actually, this is, this is not a ten-minute drive. This is people are coming from this area in a specific statistical amount.
That's correct. It's very, it's, it's, so, and I'm proving, you guys, you sound like you're fairly familiar with it. Our process will be go out and interview the customers or give point of sales information where we can, or we take the license plate and get a household address from that plate information. And we plotted all on a map, and we eliminated the last five percent as outliers, just as a conservative measure. And we took the closest sixty-five percent of those remaining samples to define this geography. And this is, this is the way Panera or Whole Foods or Walgreens, in essence, define their trade areas, the statistical version, just like this. Walgreens might use a hundred percent of their samples. They may use a hundred percent of their samples as their market just because they have, they trade in such a small area. And they might get the majority of those in a four and a half minute drive time, very compact area, three mile ring. We look at it, this was actually done through census tract, but you can do the same process, look at what is the drive time to capture sixty-five percent? Or what is a concentric ring, which is, which is this circle, what is a concentric ring that captures just the closest sixty-five percent?
Would you say that the bigger that ring, the more likely the place is eight destinations?
No question, yeah.
And one of the things, we mentioned earlier, how, some of the other reports were doing studies and they said it was a ten-mile ring or a.